Okay, last call, last call for voting. If you haven't voted, you need to come here pronto. Early and often, as Robert says.
I didn't have to show off my membership card.
Okay, everybody. Hello. Alright. I can tell this will be a rough night. No, no. Poor Carol, you were walking in. Alright, thank you. Voting is now officially closed. So for the next two and a half hours, I will give the state of the NAR report. And I did cut out 100 slides, so now we're down to about 150. What? Oh. So, I'm used to being a cover model now in print media, but not, still not so much in video. So I can stand still only for a certain amount of time. But anyways, let's get started. Alright, let's start with our safety minute. And this may take me a little bit more than a minute, but I'll try real hard to get it. Again, you can't overemphasize why would appropriate. I mean, if we're set up and the wind's going the wrong way, there's no way you can reorient your range, then we have to shut down and just not fly. On tangos are extremely important. I mean, probably, I was out at the sport range on Saturday, and it took us a couple adjustments to really capture the wind and figure out how to get things oriented correctly. But once we did, we had a lot of safe lights and things went really well. One question. How many clubs in here or members of clubs, do you have some semblance of a written safety plan that you know what to do, who to call if something happens? Okay, good, good. Another question and something we've been working hard at high-power ranges is we really need to ask ourselves, does that person belong at the launch area in with the launch pad? And where this really comes and becomes apparent is, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on at some of the high-power pads. Sometimes something goes wrong. Do we really need our three-year-old child out there who is not situationally aware of what's going on, you know, being in potential danger? So as you're setting up, you know, especially in high-power areas, only have people out at the pads and allow people at the pads who are actively involved and aware of what's going on, both with the rocket you're setting up and around it. We really avoid some accidents that way. And this one, I actually added this. How do I move this way, am I okay? Standing in front of that speaker. Ah, okay. Sorry. I have to get my video coordinator to help me out here. But alright, so the last thing I want to talk about in this particular one, is your ground support equipment safe and functioning properly? And we had an incident in our sport range on Saturday, and unfortunately, the leads for one of the high-power pads were hot to, and nobody recognized it until the flyer actually hooked up the leads to the igniter inside the rocket and it was a J-450 went off literally almost in his face. I mean, he recognized, I think enough that he stepped back when he heard it hissing. So my point is, and this is not, in no way meant to be a slam against the local club and how things going, but I think, you know, once we recognized there was a problem, we did a whole bunch of things to save it and prevent it in the future. But one of the things I really want to emphasize in this is, you know, really look at the different systems and the different things that are going on at your launch. Are there secondary things that you can do that will safeguard you in the event that the primary thing, which we think is a cold pad and the switches were all off at the launch controller, it was a direct short in the junction box? So are there other things that you can do, like touching the clips together and is there a spark? Hooking up your igniter on a high-power motor outside of the rocket and then after it's hooked up, put it in. Disconnecting the leads to the controller box and then reconnecting them. But, you know, think of these kind of practices and what redundant systems can we put into place to safeguard and prevent accidents from happening? And kudos goes out to, again, to the level of clubs. We got together, put our heads together and came up with a whole series of safety practices that they put into place in addition to a lot of the safeguards that they had in place prior to that accident. So again, check and recheck things and don't become complacent. Alright, I'm going to go a minute and a half on my safety thing. And there's lots of parts of the country that are getting drier and drier at this time of year and on into the fall. Fire safety, we are like one big fire away from like major, major insurance problems, major problems with the hobby. No flying during burn bans. You would be maybe or maybe not surprised about the number of people that call me up and say, "There's a burn ban in my area, can I fly? Will the insurance cover this?" And I'm like, "No." But, you know, let's use common sense. You know, we don't, if the conditions aren't right, let's, you know, we don't need to fly. Clear the area around the pads. You know, what's the requirements for a sparking motor in the clearance around the pad?
As upon the size of the motor.
As upon the size of the, okay, that's good news. But we need a large area cleared around the pads for sparking motors. If it's not, even when it's safe, and you have a sufficient area cleared, if the ground all over the place is dry and you haven't had rain for months, let's not use sparking motors, maybe. Alright, do you have suppression equipment there, ready and working? Is your suppression equipment a dry, chemical extinguisher? Does that really help you out in a grass fire? Probably not. You know, so do we have equipment that has water and suppression equipment? Do you know who to call and where to tell them to come if something happens and goes wrong? Write it down and keep it in at the RSO table. Because I can tell you, I used to be a firefighter and EMS and even having been exposed to all that, in the heat of the moment when something goes wrong, I forget everything, you know, where am I, oh my gosh. You know, I keep doing the emergency medical stuff, but my source, where I am, just sort of, because I had no way to stop and think about it. Having it written down, then you have something you can just read. We are at this location. And finally, just inspect all ground ejections. Don't go, "Ah, that looks like it's okay." Actually go up and make sure that everything is completely safe and that there is no fire. Alright. Every once in a while, I read some of the forums and lots of people call me and talk to me and I've got lots of questions about our insurance. The NAR has an awesome insurance policy, right? We're great safety record, our insurance rates are really, really low. It hasn't gone up year over year. But a couple of things I really want to get people thinking about with respect to our insurance. Our insurance is not a fallback from doing stupid things. Just because we have insurance doesn't mean you can go flying rockets in dangerous, high-fire probability areas. We can't fly over people, we can't fly into cars, we can't fly into buildings. You know, it's there for when an accident occurs, if we've done all the right things and still something goes wrong that's outside of our control. Alright. Our coverage is $5 million per individual incident and $6 million in aggregate for an entire year. So if we have two $5 million claims in a year, we're out $4 million. Or we have to come find some way of raising $4 million. But, you know, God forbid that anything even remotely close to that happened. But that's what the limits are in a policy that we have. One thing, I've been spending a lot of time talking to our insurance agent, Bob Longstar. The man is a saint. I mean, he covers everything for us, he's very, very responsive. Members call him up and ask him all sorts of crazy questions and he's very tolerant, very patient with people. But one of the things we were talking about and trying to get people to think about is, evaluate your sense of risk and how risk averse you want to be. And you should maybe talk to your insurance agent about whether or not you think you're covered enough with our policy and whatever you have with your personal policy. And what I mean by that, so I do lots of different things in my personal life and in my professional life. And I have, I actually looked it up the other day. I have a $5 million umbrella policy on my personal insurance, which I view as, thank you, Jason, is very helpful in terms of helping to support all the activities I do and offers me additional risk averse or aversion for the hobbies, rocketry, some of the other things that I do. Okay? So, and I arrived at that number in talking with my insurance agent and sort of getting a better sense of how I feel, what the different coverages are for the different policies. So instead of, and I bring this up because I get all these calls, well, you know, what does our insurance really cover and do we have enough and that kind of thing? It's like, you all have individual sort of preferences and you need to make some of these decisions on your own based on your own personal situations. Follow the safety codes. And so the best possible thing to do to help ensure that an accident is not deemed entirely your fault is if you follow and practice our safety codes, that's what our insurance policy is based on. Document all incidents. Something averse happens, write down what occurred, who, when, where, how, everything. Keep that on file. If nothing may ever come of it, but having things in writing will really help your memory to, every week or every three weeks, when something changes, someone all of a sudden decides, "Oh, hey, I need to make a claim because this got hurt, this got broken, whatever." And then finally, just so people understand, we have a deductible with our policy. It's a $5,000 deductible for incident. The member is responsible for the first $1,000 of that and the NAR pays the rest. That's on your first claim. The second one is all on you. So just know what the LARs are and what's covered and what's your responsibility versus the NAR. Alright, the picture's about what, five months old? I want to thank the NAR officers and trustees. Myself, Carol Markles, our vice president. Markwise, secretary. Everybody is. Tom Haas, our treasurer. Randy Goaway. Randy's a board member eventually. Hey Vince, Kevin Johnson. And we're calling Jim Harper, who's also a board member. Jim's on here, something about flying a plane somewhere, you know, Fort Jim. And Marie Stumppe, our office manager. Marie's, she told me, "Oh, they're rebuilding their deck and she has to ever see it." So let her stay home this week. Alright, let's talk about the NAR. We continue to be awesome in a bunch of areas. Some of the areas that I like to continue to highlight. Our magazine continues to be the best ever. Tom. And also Todd, Todd, a publisher, does an awesome job as well in layout and a lot of the pictures now and content is generated through Todd's at Todd Deck. What else are we doing? High-power certification is at very highs. I'll show you some numbers in a minute. Our liability insurance remains at $5 million. You all may or may not know it, and some of you guys know it, but actually NASA helped pay for a big portion of that. So we actually bumped up our policy from $2 to $5 million and NASA, because of the student launch work that we do, is paying that extra $3 million worth of coverage in our policy. And we continue to make improvements for our website. Again, Todd's doing an awesome job with our website. Click the new content, freshening things up. And John Bowden, who helps on the backend and does a lot of programming for us out of Mexico City now, is our webmaster and does a lot of the technical things. So our website is awesome. Alright, so in 2018, we gave away over $36,000 in, or $36,000 in grants for educational grants and scholarships. We had a great section grant program. We gave out $8,700 and they're telling me this year we're exceeding that already. So sections are finally taking advantage of the money we offer them back to help grow your sections. And remember, it's not just for safety anymore, although we, you know, hope that you have all the safety equipment you need, but you can apply for a NAR section grant for pretty much anything that helps to support your section. And we consistently are doing our really key partnerships. NASA for the student launch program. AIA and all the students across the US for TARC. We do other STEM programs, Arlis for example. So there's all sorts of really cool things we're doing to promote and build STEM throughout the US. And actually, actually the world with Arlis, so. Alright, so how are we doing membership-wise? I love this graph because it just keeps on coming up. But trust me, this is the highest we've ever been. We're at 7,431. I love this number a lot. And it's been slowly ticking up today, so I would guess that if I looked now, it may be above 7,431. But today's the 29th? Okay, so we have two more days in July, so we'll probably bump it up. I mean, it'd be awesome if we hit 7,500, but I think that 7,500 goal is really getting within reach. And the benchmark, so 7,430 when I created this, we actually bumped it up to 7,431 a little while ago. And the growth since July 2017, when I became president, has been 12.6%. This is a really good steady growth rate, which has been great. And a lot of people are really helped out and made ground for this group to grow. We're a diverse association and hopefully we're becoming more and more diverse. But I love this graph also. I used to be the mean age of a NAR member. So every year that I got older, the mean age got older. So I don't know if that was a reflection on me, I'm not taking it that way. But our median age now is 51, the mean is 44. But this distribution is what I love to see. So we've got really good, strong growth in 70-year-olds and stronger, our membership keeps up in the older age groups as well. So, and if our database is correct, we actually have a member of 90 years old. I wasn't suggesting. Alright, talking about high-power certification. We have 3,644 certified high-power flyers. This is the distribution. That 3,644 does not include our junior high-power members. We add that, we would actually be more than 50% of our members are high-power certified. Sections, sections are growing. Did I get this right, Randy? We're at 195, right?
We're at it, yeah. We might get 196 today.
Alright, we continue to grow, okay. The number of sections is the highest it's ever been. It's the highest it's been since I. And one of the many shout-outs that I want to give tonight. Chuck Neff has taken on section activities and Chuck is doing just an awesome job. I mean, Chuck interacts with everybody. Somebody calls up or sends me an email and say, "Hey, I'm interested in this or that" with respect to a section. I send an email to Chuck and boom, he's right on. I don't have to, it's like, "John, I got it, I'll just take and run with it." And I just can't ever emphasize how great a job Chuck's doing. You know, I don't know, about six months ago, I said, "Hey Chuck, you're such a great asset to the NAR. Why don't you run for the board, you know, we really need this energy and want to keep growing the board." Chuck's like, "Naff, I want to stay doing sections. I'm really in the groove there, I want to keep doing it." So, I mean, anytime, give everybody, you know, write Chuck and tell him thank you. He's just doing a great job for us. Like I said, the section is growing stronger than ever, but we still have room to grow. 195, let's go for what, 225 this time next year, Randy? How many members do you need to start a section? Two? Alright, I'm part of a lot of sections, by the way. But, yeah, you need two to start and what, five within the first year? Two years? Okay, you have five for two years. So, and we're expanding the graph. We've got a lot of schools now that are sections, which is great. We're really engaging youth again. Alright, this is financial, okay. So last year, we brought in almost $470,000. We spent about $440,000. So our net income, we gained a little bit of whatever. We keep on trying to spend money to, you know, do more and more things. It's really a tough job, but we're, you know, we're doing okay. So this year, we set a budget, it's a little bit higher and most of that increase is reflected in the budget. So 58, $580,000 was our income. We're predicting about $560,000 in expenses. So that should give us a net income of $23,000 year over year for this year. And I think in our budget, we tried to program in that we would be, what, negative $20,000? We're not quite there yet, but we're trying. We've got good ideas on what we can do to help the organization or clubs. Let us know and, you know, we'll evaluate and see what we can do. Okay, this, there will not be a quiz, so you don't have to take notes. But just a quick snapshot of where does our money come from? Membership's about almost 70%. We're membership-driven. Donations and grants, and that includes the student launch money is about a quarter and then everything else sort of falls in the last, I can't do the mental math, about 7, 8%. Our expenses, magazine continues to be the single most expensive thing we do. Roughly a third of our budget goes to the magazine. Insurance, NAR headquarters is about 10%. Student launch, that money comes in, money goes out, same thing. National events is about 10%. So you can see it. But overall, a couple of real big-ticket items, the magazine is, continues to be the driver and then insurance and headquarters. This is really bugged up. What? Alright, so how many of you remember our partnership with the Museum of Flight? Yeah, how many of you have been to the Museum of Flight? Oh man, you guys got a good travel on the East Coast. Seattle's a great city to begin with, and then you get to go to the Museum of Flight as well. But as you all see now, we're working with the Museum of Flight to create this national collection of models, support rocketry. And initially, we have the G. Harriet Stein collection there, they're working on that. This fall, the Lee and Betty Peaster collection should go there and I haven't heard yet quite when Vernon Lee's collection is going there, but things are really sort of ramped up on the Stein collection and cataloging it. Just real quick, in case you didn't know, but, and to reinforce it, this is not just something where we're going to curate a whole bunch of stuff and then it's going to sit in this museum and nobody knows anything about it and stuff. The whole idea is to make this a research resource for both STEM and other rocketry enthusiasts, okay? This is stuff that, the goal is, this will be a reason that you can have access to and use, not just by going to the Museum of Flight, but in a lot of different electronic forums as well. And like you said, there are times, things like Flickr, there's, you know, photographs and a lot of photographic content that's available as well as a lot of technical documentation. So where are we right now and sort of where do we need to go? So previously, we had a fundraising campaign. We raised, what, $50,000 from the NAR and there were some matching grants from the Museum of Flight, some great donors from there. We hired a rocketry archivist, Sharice Michelson. And they tell me she's just like the rocket expert now. So she's like flying through this stuff. She's really doing an awesome job with curating the Stein collection. About mid-March, or sometime in March, she expects to be done curating the Stein collection. We want her to continue, alright? We've invested a lot in Sharice and she's, she's probably the expert now in archiving rocketry materials. So the Peaster, the Peaster collection is scheduled to go there sometime in October. Our goal is to keep Sharice moving so that we retain that talent and she can keep curating the additional parts of the collection. So again, we need more funding to complete the last two parts of this collection. And we, talking to Pat Dispatrick and museum people, they're like, "You guys got to help us not lose Sharice. We got to keep her, you know, give her job security so she can finish this entire job so we don't have to spin up another archivist to help us finish the collection." So our goal is to raise $25,000 by the end of this fiscal year. We've already raised, I think in excess now of $5,000. So there's going to be a campaign that we've started to roll out and we're going to continue to roll out over the next couple of months to meet or exceed this goal to keep Sharice employed and keep things going. We're paying part of our salary and the museum is splitting part of that with us. Alright, so how can you do it? You can make donations at nar.org/donate. We're going to actually make it more prominent on our website to make it even easier. And Pat, the entrepreneur that he is, has also got this Saturn Rising poster that will be signed by Vernon Lee. And it was done by, he tells me all this stuff and, you know, poor Pat. He's like, "Well, Chris Calliott is the artist who did this." And I'm like, "Well, who's he?" And I can just see the eyes rolling and, so, you know. Get what you paid for, right? So anyways, so, but they're creating this poster and it will be signed and so that's another way that you can contribute to the fund. So again, visit our website. We've got some print stuff coming out in the next sport rocketry to keep you informed of this event. Alright, so what are some of our priorities? We want to continue to grow our membership. I had to like add the 7,400 in there and then we just sort of rolled past that this month. So I feel pretty good about that. So now my goal is 7,500 or more by the end of the year. You know, that was a stretch goal that we gave you here. I may have to sort of revisit it because I can tell you, September, October, when we really ramp up our thing with TARC and a lot of schools joining on, so we get a big spike in October of our membership. We continue to want to be transparent on our board decisions and putting out information in as many different forums as possible related to our board. We want to continue to help our sections with our section grant program. And my slogan, we just have flying rockets and have fun. I try really hard, you know, to do that. I actually packed a rocket and when I went to the sport launch in California, got some little looks, you know, because I actually carried it. little looks, you know, because I actually carried it on with me, and I was looking like, "Look at that." And I took it out and showed them, and everything was cool with that, but, you know, as best I can. I'm not building a whole lot right now, but I'm still flying a bunch and having fun, and that's why I do it, and that's why you guys should be doing it. All right, what are some of the board actions? Oh, wait a minute, first, who lives in the DC area? Did you guys down to see the monument?
Oh.
Oh, yes, you saw Chris. All right, so if you haven't heard, Smithsonian, somebody's really creative, and they figured out that the full-size Saturn V, you could project that on the Washington Monument and Chuck. And so, I checked down there one night, and my wife is telling me all along, she goes, "Oh, this is going to be a breeze. It's like 10 o'clock. We're just going to zip in and zip out and everything." I don't know, there was like a complete traffic jam down on the Mall for people coming to see this, and this is before they even hit the film. So they projected the Saturn V on the Washington Monument, and my iPhone picture doesn't do it justice, but it was actually a film and the, what, condensate coming off of the gas tanks and everything was actually, you could see it on the rocket. I mean, this was super cool then. So kudos to Smithsonian, I heard on the radio subsequent to the putting it up there. They, in their wildest dreams, thought maybe 25,000 people would show up. I think it was almost 300,000 plus that went down to DC for four or five days to see this. Hey, can we leverage this? Is this going to be more NAR members and more people excited in rocketry? I hope so. All right, so what did we do today? We reviewed our budget, and things are looking still very positive budget-wise. We created a policy to clarify eligibility for voting members. And what I mean by that is, our bylaws say you have to be a NAR member, a leader member, and in the NAR for a year before you're eligible to vote. Well, that leaves a little bit of interpretation in there, so we just tightened up some of the things. So, for example, if you are a NAR member now for six months, but you previously have been a NAR member for more than a year, but there's a gap between then and now, that still counts towards your full year of NAR membership. I don't remember all the exact other parts of it, but we'll put it out in the minutes and publicize it with our policies. But just to help us and to make sure we're, again, being transparent in how we interpret the bylaws, because there is a little bit of wiggle in how one can interpret it versus the other. Okay, we discussed the member survey and national events and came up with a lot of good points that we want to do in a survey. We're going to get that out, I think, pretty soon. And we also had an initial discussion about the form of sport rocketry, and by that I mean, we're getting more and more questions, you know, it's available now electronically, it's still available on paper. What's the NAR going to do? Are we going to make it all electronic? No, we're still getting paper. But we're just starting to have the discussion amongst the board on how do we want to handle this sort of change in technology and handle it with our members. So we're still thinking, and we've got a lot to think about on that, and I know AMA has done a lot of thinking on that too, and has rolled theirs out in both forms. We have it available in both forms, but we're just trying to figure out how, the best way to handle everything associated with these different forms. And we also looked at, are there ways of delivering other kinds of content to our members? Oh, I took my ass to a stall. Mark, you wanted to talk about the guidebook?
First of all, thank you, John, for the flight. I kind of talked about magazines today and the complications of that. We're looking to generate some new content for the NAR guidebook. Traditionally, that guidebook is meant to be getting models. We're getting requests, we take our valid requests for having something a little higher value. Members who have been in the NAR for several years need slightly different content. If you have ideas about that content, or you think you could write an article for a guidebook that would fit into that, John, please come to see me or Todd during the air. We're going to be here all week. I have intentions to kind of visit some of you that I've seen some of the work that you've done in the past that I think would fit that. So don't be surprised if you get surprised on the range. You can have me on the show to say, "Hi, I'd like to come to write a guidebook." Please come to see me, Todd, my son. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And if you don't volunteer, I know he's very persuasive. I've heard. And then if he's not persuasive enough, we can always get Trip to help, right? Actually, Trip, I need to do a shout-out to you too. How many, how many people actually read the rocketry? It better be everybody's hand coming up now. Trip works really hard helping me put this together. In fact, I mean, well, I think it's that Navy film. You just got this down to a science now, where, you know, Steve gets sort of whipped into shade, and poor Ed, you know, gets all these requests, and, but we're generating some really good content, it's really good help for me, and so, thank you, Trip, for all you do to help put that together for us. All right, so what else are we doing this year and what can you look forward to? We're continuing our strong program in scholarships and grants. Mark swore in secrecy, he wouldn't even tell me anything about it, but we have candy grants this year in our scholarships. We continue to have the Feskin Scholarship to a student in aerospace engineering, so we got lots of members and their families paying forward. And the Gleed Asses Scholarship for a woman entering in the first year of STEM will also occur this year, and I hear we've got some great recipients. So stay tuned, you're going to talk about that at the banquet on Saturday.
The banquet, yes.
So, you know, we're doing some awesome things for education. Talk about elections and voting, and I'm going to keep doing suspense, so you have to listen to me for another vote, but I do want to give a shout-out. We had, in my time being in NAR, we had the largest slate of people running for trustee. So Carl Curling, thank you. Becky Green, hey, thank you. Tom Ha, thanks. Matt Johnson, I saw you once, yeah, thanks, Matt. Steve Lovliner, yay, Carol Marple, Carol Lynn, Lynn Thomas. This is awesome. And voting was up this year, right? We had the largest voting for now, I'll reach it up as well. So we had 316 total votes this year. Now, out of 7,000, I'm still, you know, we got more room to improve, but what was it, like three or four years ago, we were down in the 50s? So, hey, we got a big improvement over a couple of years ago, but we need to really keep, continue to get our members engaged in voting, but I feel really good, and I think we've done a good job this year in terms of elections and voting. All right, some other things that are still happening. We still pay up to, but not for every article, $350 for sport rocketry articles. If you have some good stuff, you want to get into sport rocketry, talk to Mark, talk to Todd. We still do the expired motors testing, you need to talk to Steve Lovliner about that. And we still help support motive, murderkato.org, and reporting failed motors. It's not quite ready yet, but we're actually working with Tripoli to develop an app that you can actually do that online, and it'll put a lot of the information into the system for you. That's almost ready to roll out, I think. We're still doing a couple of testing pieces still. And Facebook, I did actually two years earlier today. I had 6,600 or something, but we have, we're so large on our Facebook account now, it doesn't say 7,421, it says 7.4K members on Facebook. So Facebook still remains strong, and Carol, Mark, who else?
Ted Cochran.
Ted Cochran, all some really good people, help moderate, keep it family-friendly and stuff on topic. All right, so what are, almost done. What are our primary concerns? We've had no insurance claims that I know of since 2016. Our insurance, thank you, and this is reflected in our insurance premium. Our premium went up 0.39% year-over-year, from last year to this year. Our membership went up several hundred. So this is awesome, and Bob Longster, again, our insurance agent, said, "Hey, John, you guys are doing a great job. If you're not getting insurance premiums rising above like 3% or 4% per year." So how do we do that? We don't fly rockets that don't need to be flown. We still have some near misses and stuff that's landing way close to people and way close to cars and in the crowd. As much as we can, if one rocket flies over, let's relook at our launch angles and wind direction and keep things going in the right, safe areas. And if we have a major accident, our financial health is going to be going out to paying insurance claims and deductibles and not in member services. So if we want to keep doing member services, we've got to keep being safe so as to keep our race down. And minor incidents are still happening way too often. All right, some other concerns. I have a little font there. So we need to continue to entertain and encourage new members to join the NAR. Get a lot of student members joining now, but hopefully, again, with all this 50th anniversary of Apollo 11, that will increase our membership with that. Launch sites, I get lots of calls, "How can you help us with launch sites?" I continue to advise you, you've got to establish relationships. We, as the national organization, can't fly in and be the knights on white horses and help you out there. You've got to establish the relationship. You've got to be a good steward of the landowner's land, and you have to be a good neighbor, all right? When you fly your rockets onto the neighbor's property, you go on and they don't want your rockets on their property, you open the gates and you call all their defenses and do all this crazy stuff that they don't want you to do, then they complain to the landowner, and the landowner goes, "I'm tired of this. You guys can't launch on our property." Right? So establish good relationships with the landowners, establish good relationships with the neighbors, be courteous, and, you know, think about what you're doing on their property, would you want that to happen on your property? And we can always use more sections, right, Randy? Exactly. All right. I've got some things to get out. So, I don't see a gears. Matt Johnson, the gear?
Mark's here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark. Sorry, Ron Johnson.
Ron's not here.
Mark is not here. Oh, well. Well, we have at least one 50-year member, somebody whispered in our ears, and Mark Johnson's 50th year anniversary with the NAR is this year, so kudos to Mark. I need to have a couple of minutes. I'm going to be recognizing them. Now I have to be balancing it. I don't know. I'll be fine. I'm elevating off screen. Okay. All right, so I have a few awards I want to give out tonight, and bear with me, and I'll try to do it as fast as I can, you know, but I think this is really something that you all enjoy. I'm telling myself, but anyways, one of the ones I want to give out is to the Academy of Model Aeronautics and Chad B. Drow, who's here with them. Thank you so much for, you know, being a...
Thank you.
So, we definitely, we definitely can come back and give this again.
Yes. You know, we have, at AMA, we have a lot of partnerships, but I guarantee you, if you took an AMA member out of an AMA chapter or club, blindfolded that individual, took them to an NAR section, aside from maybe some technical changes such as, you know, how do you identify CG, we're nearly identical. And I would say we're more than just partners. I really believe this is, we're like a family, and we're more like a sister association. So we're very honored to host you. I'm going to be out on the flying site, so I'll be sure to say hi, and once again, thanks for, thanks for being a great guest.
So this next one, poor Jay. I get a chance to embarrass you, Jay, I love it. So, and this is not for you achieving your level-two certification. And by the way, if you need another Ford pleasure, let me know. I keep a couple around, but, sorry, inside Jay, poor Jay. But Jay, on behalf of the National Association of Architects, I want to thank you for really being the shepherd of this whole project and being, you know, our number-one fan with the AMA and helping to get this to happen.
Can you use it on?
So Jay is much older than I am, because he's, he also is a 50-year member. Now, I got to embarrass Jay internationally last year in Poland, to give him his 50-year pin. So again, Jay, thank you. Next, I'll call him up here once in a while. All right, so, you know, Ed, when did you start the expanding competition committee?
Too long ago for me to remember anymore.
Two or four years ago?
Three years ago, when I first came on board.
Okay, so I want to give a real shout-out now to Ed DeCroy and the committee that he pulled together to expand competition. I think we came up with a good rubric, and it's something that's growing, and I think we've got a really good start to it. But, you know, you guys, if we had to pay you guys by the hour, we would be thankful. They spent just so much time doing, you know, going through the rules, creating stuff, going back and forth. They'd send me stuff, "John, what do you think about it?" And I'd say, "Oh, I don't like the fonts," and then they'd send me other stuff, and I'd say, you know, "Oh, well, you know, what about this?" And they spent just gobs of time working on this and really worked their hearts out, and the commitment to this group in terms of trying to establish a new way to look at competition, I think is just phenomenal. So I want to give a Howard Galloway Space Modeling Award to Ed and the committee for all their accomplishments, so. Ed DeCroy, Scott Alexander, is not here?
He's not here.
Scott's not here, Chad?
Chad Ray. Chad, are you in here?
No.
Thank you, oh my goodness. Chris Kidwell, you're here. All right, hey, Chris, the job wouldn't be complete unless we had the database and the scoreboard online, so, hey, Chris, you got to come up here. And none of them here, so.
Who doesn't like the scoreboard?
Yeah, really.
No, everyone likes the scoreboard.
Thank you.
Jim was a huge contributor.
Now, Jim, we got to talk.
This way.
Okay, oh, we have to be on camera, so, all right. So I have one of these nice plaques for you too, Jim.
Did it miss my name?
No. Your name is spelled correctly, but I looked at who was coming to Narum and to this event, and Glenn Tebier's name wasn't on, so I gambled and thought, you know, Glenn's probably not here, so I sorted everything out, and just before I left, I picked up a plaque. Got Glenn, yours is sitting on my desk at home, so Jim?
Can you verify this?
She's not lying in my office. I will personally deliver yours to you once we get back.
Here he comes.
Oh, Chad.
Chad.
Better late than never, Chad.
Sparring journey down, Chad, get up there.
All right, Chad, so he missed all his speech, but he also did a Galloway Award for your role on this event.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
I have to take a moment and say that the NRC would not have happened without these guys. All I did was shepherd them along, I made sure the phone calls happened, and that we worked on it together. But the real credit goes to Chad and Jim and Glenn and Chris and Scott, and Scott Alexander. So thank them when you have the opportunity, and I hope the NRC is performing for you as well as we designed it to be.
Thank you.
All right. So, can I use that camera like right here so I can see when I'm not in?
You're fine.
Permit, I'm fine right here?
Yeah, the recording's here.
Well, no, why not stand in here?
You have to get an arrow.
You're better than that.
Sorry. That's what happens when you're a stall, right? Okay. So, I have one last award I want to give. Vince, on behalf of the NAR, I want to give you a President's Award for being on the Board of Trustees. Now, hopefully I got this corrected, and I like researched the heck out of this, but you started the board in 2007, am I right?
Twelve years.
Oh, I got it.
Yes.
All right, and also you served to the NAR Education Committee, so Vince, I have one more to give. And fun fact, for those of you that know Vince, but Vince is also a print model now. And if you haven't seen it, Vince is featured prominently in a book that Levi Strauss put out on clothing lines for the 2000s. And Vince will gladly show you his picture in the book, as well as stand, stay with you and have your picture taken with Vince, the print model star. So, by all means, come up and congratulate Vince, but also get him to show you his picture and do a selfie with Vince and his picture with you to be part of that stardom and share it with Vince. All right, where am I? One more, let me see where I'm on the slides. Okay, I will not be here on, for the rest of the week actually, I have to get them tomorrow. Work calls, another pesky thing, your job gets in the way and you have to get back into work, but anyway, so I'm not going to be here, but I do want to thank all of the local committees for putting on the Rocketry Festival for NAR 2019, our sponsors, you all who are attending, AMA again, Rocketeer Central Indiana, Ricestop Rocketry. You know, you all worked together and created an awesome experience that I've experienced so far, and it only looks better for the rest of the week, at least with the weather report saying. So, special thanks, Ed DeCroy, Jay Marsh, Mario, Dave Coon, Brian Guzik, Matt Steele. Thank you all. So, I'll wrap this up, and then I have the election results I can do over. So, what can you do? Fly safely and make sure that others around you are flying safely as well. Recruit new NAR members, high-power flyers, competitors. Take your turn volunteering, particularly locally. Do community outreach, make sure everyone knows and takes advantage of our scholarship and grants. Be safe, have fun, pay forward and aspire to the future. Thank you very much.
I just want everybody here to know that, of course, we are seeking donations for the Canon auction. If anyone here has brought material specifically for the Canon auction, please see me or Brian Guzik, we will collect them, all right? Or Steve Loveliner, who will be, who will be the auctioneer this year, just so you all know that. Also, as NAR concludes, we will be, God will be uploading the next version of the sporting code, which will have section champs rules. So, you're going to be able to start competing for section championships in the next cycle, and I hope that makes a lot of people in here happy. Thanks.
All right. I'll keep this just a little bit longer. We have another special guest here, so, you know, we've got to really light up, so, Kevin, I need help.
Rick.
Rick, you're with the local planetarium?
No. No, but I graduated from Ball State.
Ah, wait. Wait, you've got to stand right here.
Get your mark, get your steel, you can hold it.
Okay, I have arranged, but won't be able to confirm until Wednesday afternoon, access to the Ball State Planetarium, which seats about 150. And if we made this happen, would you, for the youngsters who might be with us, but how many of you might be wanting to go to a planetarium show on Thursday or Friday afternoon at 3:30? Okay, we'll keep announcing, I have to come up with a map, and where we're going to park it, a little bit over, but it's not that far away, so. As we, oh, and there's also, if there's a rain day, there's also an art museum at Ball State that's woolen clad, and it's really good.
Thanks. So, now it's time to figure out, can I get back home and then get another flight, come back here now? Have a try. All right, so, I do have the results of our election. Wow, I'm surprised, this is like monumental. All right, so, I'll read them in order. Should I go bottom up or top down? I want to go top down.
You're called.
Oh, I'll go top down, I'll get better. All right, so, in, our three new trustees are Carol Marple, actually she's not known on, but she's our mother. Becky Green. Lynn Thomas. This is done president. I love it. Sure, Carol Marple, Becky Green, Lynn Thomas, I'll give you the counts on those. Carol had 227 votes, Becky 147, Lynn Thomas 142. Rounding out the slate, Steve Loveliner 133, Tom Ha 124, Carl Curling 73, Matt Johnson 37. We had 316 total votes, 229 of those were online, 64 million points. All right, thank you all for voting and participating. With that, I will open it up to the floor, any questions?
You had some pre-canned questions, did you? Pre-canned questions?
I did. Sorry, I lost my prop. And I actually put them on a slide, and I thought, yeah, somebody asked about this. All right, so, and I kept it a while, but we asked the membership if they wanted to submit any questions early, so we got several. And one of the concerns, and I'll try, I'm going to capture this in a few words, it captures the essence, but the question essentially is, we've had a lot of traditional NAR-type events, and will they continue? For example, night flights, imagination celebration, Midwest best qualified flights, some high-power events for the week, carnival-style events, like, I think Muskegon was one that I remember the most. I can tell you from speaking from the Board of National Events, I mean, we definitely want to encourage all these kind of events to continue, and oftentimes it's up to the imagination of the local events committee, we certainly encourage the breadth of different kinds of things and try to spark interest, but really this happens a lot locally in what the local groups want to pull together and put on on the NAR. So, certainly as the national organization, we're very supportive and will continue to be supportive of it, but as you host local events like NAR support launches, you know, we certainly encourage you to have special events. I mean, some of the special events we're doing now, the Apollo 11 flights, did we do any high-power? Ed, did we do any high-power special flights this time?
Yeah, we had two.
Two, okay. And night ones?
We have an Apollo, well, we have an Apollo spot landing and an Apollo wall.
We had a 3A AAA wall.
Okay, so, again, we try to give those to the local groups. Secondly, their hardware and the awards that are given out, and the question is, can this be specified to a requirement that medals, plaques, trophies are always given out in low cash? Again, I don't want to say, you know, we can, we certainly can talk as a board again about these kind of things, but again, it's something we encourage the local organizations to put together the programs and the kinds of awards that they want, but, and, you know, as members, if this is really what the members want in terms of recognition and competition in different events, that's certainly good useful information that we can take in and will use to advise local organizations who are putting on our national events on the kind of awards that people tend to like. Are we answering? Are we getting the high spots here?
Yes, maybe.
Okay, the next question, all right, I knew it was one, all right. So, another thing that we've done in the past, and it's actually supported by a very generous grant by Bob Alway, in terms of supporting travel for B-division members as well as awards for B-division research and development projects. I can tell you that as a board, we had a long discussion about that, and, you know, Bob was very, very generous in his donation, but that donation ran out. As, you know, looking at the participation and how things were going with that, the numbers were really, really dwindling, and it was becoming harder and harder to attract young members to do that. If, we certainly entertained some additional ideas and ways to bring in A and B divisioners to our competitions and to these week-long celebrations. And so, if there are ideas and if we can identify individuals, certainly as a board, we'd love to figure out ways of attracting more young members to participate in events like this and even locally. So, you know, help us help you by coming up and giving us ideas and solutions to these problems, not just giving us the, "Hey, what can you all do for us?" So, Matt, can you?
With all due respect, there are worse solutions often than there. With all due respect, there are worse solutions often than there. You don't know what they are, do you? Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I'm, I'm, I'm going by memory right now, so, can you help me? By all means, you can tell us what your suggestions are.
Well, my first comment was simply, it's a sin that we have not helped young flyers move towards harder to attract them, flyers, and it really is that we need to support young flyers. And I had probably five things listed on there, including paying for their dinner, paying for their strip gear, that kind of thing that the NAR has to finish on. And instead of using words like the shrine tradition and stuff like that, we're just lost over these things, well, that's fine, but it just seems like, you know, the opportunity to say, we're going to do something about some kind of telegraph to young flyers, whatever you want to call it, and then encourage them through, I think there's a whole list of school supporting projects, you know, we need to have clubs who actually give kids from school to get some kind of rewards for the NAR, whether it's a grant or some support financially, you should say that goes to schools, that gives kids a lot, I think we're going to have pages on that topic.
Okay, and Matt, what I'm suggesting of the membership is, come to the board with, you know, you as your, hear me out, you as your local club would like to try a school-based program to entice younger members to come to local events, national events, whatever, bring us a proposal, exactly what you want to do, and ask the board for funding.
Once again, forever and ever, there's no top-down support, top-down support. You're asking 50 people out of 7,000 members, top-down support. You write a memo every other month, and it talks about where you've been, how tired you are, what about supporting us?
Well, I don't know how that...
Every, every, I've been to Apollo, I've been to Europe, why am I tired? And she was the museum and went to West Coast to go break. And then, that's it, what about, I know, again, I'm the only person who can fly, I'm the only person who writes a letter, but this year, you're figuring out pages and pages are coming, I assume that people consent and wonder why there's no comment.
And any other people have any suggestions?
First of all, just like last year.
Any other suggestions for encouraging?
So, I'd like to point out that this, this organization or any organization works best from the bottom up. The best ideas originate in sections and in individuals, and what matters is what we do as individuals on the ground with flyers locally who don't come to events like this. And I would ask, what have you done in your club to make this a change? What have you done to effect the change locally? Expecting magical solutions to come down to the board is never going to happen. Going from your problem that doesn't work is all I'm saying.
Look, I'm not asking for magical answers. You guys finally, and Brandon, bless you, you said, "Hey, we have an idea, let's ask for questions from the field, 7,000 people. I see two other ones with sexy ones, I sent it, that's fine." I'm not asking for magical answers, I'm asking for discussion and for results. Here.
I think, I'm one of the board members, and I'm very passionate about our young members. You guys remember when Amanda was around and all the things I've tried to do over the years to help young members? And I constantly hear that, "Hey, we're having a hard time in our section getting young members involved in what we're doing." And that's a very interesting statement. I was telling somebody the other day that as of September last year, I was a little bit worried about our section WSR, because we weren't getting, and a lot of the young kids that we normally had showing up weren't showing up. So, again, we always double our efforts down, and our section in particular is really careful about making sure that every kid that comes to the field gets a lot of extra attention, and we invite them to get involved. Now, I know Matt, and he is very involved in getting the other kids involved, I think that's one reason why he's so passionate about it too. But I think we, as a group, need to ask ourselves, in our sections, are we having the same type of problems? Are we having trouble with getting those young kids involved? How many first-time flyers are you getting in your section? Phil's our secretary, how many new flyers, first-time flyers this year?
I don't know, first-time flyers for Ricestop Rocketry right now, so far since first of the year, 906.
So, we've got 906 brand-new flyers that we've kind of introduced to Rocketry. So, these are great first steps, because we know out of those 906, we're going to get maybe nine come out to one of our events. And that's where it gets started, now we've got about six people. So, any ideas you've got, I'd love to hear from you.
And so, Randy, while, while I bet you on this, so, what did you all do to attract 900 first-time flyers?
Outreach. We guess outreach, one for.
In what form?
Reach specific. Outreach, going and building rockets with other kids.
If I may, somebody asked me this before, before we did the mass build fly at the Air Force Museum in Dayton, because we didn't hear over here. They asked me, you know, is this the only thing you do, you do these things often? I went back and looked over our calendar, before, what was it, July 20th, which was the date of that event, we did 19 events. Our club and individual members of our club all performed 19 outreach events, whether it was for a school or scout group or a student class, something like that. So, I mean, it's, it's true that we have a very strong, this is all outreach, whether it was a small group or large group. And then, the next layer up from that is, how many of those are, and I don't have that number, but how many of those are year after year after year, when we get invited back? We've been doing the mass build fly at the Air Force Museum, we've been doing it like five, six, seven years straight now. The Armstrong Museum, well, we're there at least twice a year, and we've been doing that probably to the last four or five.
So, do whatever you can, you build relationships.
It makes a difference. And sometimes we have to reach out, "Hey, are you interested?" Sometimes, you know, they find us by stopping by one of our... Sometimes, you know, they find us by stopping by one of our events or getting business cards in.
Yeah, we thought for our own business cards and everything.
For your local section?
For our local section. And guess what? We get a grant to cover this cost.
Right, and the message that I'm trying to emphasize from the board is, bring those ideas to the board. We give second grades, but the board has discretion to do more with dollars to do outreach and programs like this. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but did we have a support rocketry article on the outreach efforts that you guys have done? We'll gladly support you helping that to spread the message to others to help us out. But it's this kind of grassroots kinds of activities that I can tell you as a board member, I'm very willing to help support, but you all have to come to us with tangible ideas. Just say, I'm telling you, we have a surplus budget, and we have money that we're willing to give out to spend on useful activities, but you gotta, we can't just say, here's all the money and you all can do good things. Come to us with ideas that we can support and get behind you.
Now, for sections for the last few years, okay, five or six years now, we've been giving a free membership away to every section to give to a junior member. And the reason for that is, we want these kids to get the experience now with rocketry, and that's what we love us outreach for too. We're not paying forward for next week, next month, next year. We're paying forward for when that kid says, I wanna be a born again rocketeer, and gee, I went on to this really cool organization, and I had a really cool license, and I had got a really cool magazine, and I was involved with the section. Those are the things that we wanna be recruiting for now. So we don't get the payback now, but we will someday, I guarantee it. Also, if your section has not used your free membership, somebody take it on yourselves to figure out how you can give it away. Get it, give it to a neighborhood kid, give it to somebody that comes to your meeting or might be interested, and encourage them to come to our meeting. We ended up giving ours away this year, and the kid was so excited, Rocket Mom now brings us streets every week. Anyway, we only gave 11 of those awards away last year, out of 195 sections. So we can do better there, and if we can't do better there, what can we do? How can we figure out how to give a kid an experience? And the cost of an arm is not that much of a man to hit.
Do all of the sections count young flyers and first-time flyers the same way or do they all? Because if not, maybe a first step is for the board to identify best practices. I don't know.
Every player has a card.
So maybe, maybe one top-down step in the beginning is for the board just to find out what kind of best practices are, for getting that merit, push that down to sections where there are least counting consistency for how many young flyers we have, because we're just concerned about not having enough, how do we use it?
I'm sorry, can I get your name please for the minutes?
James.
Younger? James Younger, thank you.
Steve.
Yeah.
Steve first.
Steve first.
All right, just an observation here, because Sarah knows a lot about we did in schools, we definitely do outreach as far as displays and the like. It's a no-go here to sell rocketry to kids. What takes the effort is you gotta sell it to the parents. Because one of the issues that Sarah faces, our launch sites are minimum roughly from about a half an hour or so from the center of Tucson. And the parents have to drag the kids out there. So you've got to sell the parents on the benefit of rocketry. So going into the schools, unless the child goes home and says, we built a rocket today, and it was great, and I really wanna go do this, so try to get the parent's want in, that's gonna be half the target. One of the venues we do, displays, STEM days for example, and usually the parents are there, sell the parents. The other thing is, I don't push membership in the NAR when I do outreach. If the kids are interested, that will come. Because we get a couple nuggets that want to get into the hobby big time and join the NAR. The hope is though they get familiar with rocketry, they've done it before, and as they get older, we're not, I'm not looking to grow your organization to get as nice as we can, I'm looking to grow your organization in the next five years, 10 years, you know, basically a whole generation sitting in this room.
To address James's issue, we just have a checkbox in red on our flight logs. And we try to be really clear that, you know, you only check this for your very first flight ever. Because we can guys check every single launch day you fly. And since I fly the flight of flight cards, you know, I actually do a sort of C and A to look at that. So we have a fairly accurate count. And we did, until we lost A's as monthly venue, we were doing more like 1,200 a year, 1,200, 1,500 a year. We were getting 300 mostly students, and that was both alcohol break, and once you reach your critical mass, it's worth a buck.
Thanks, thank you.
We do a bucket of rockets. We get three rockets and three motors, and clever little guys, kids get to fly for free. That's what we do, just to know that, you know, kids, and homework, we have word finds and cross-reversals, because all the kids aren't into rocketry, and they play word finds, why not? Get the terminology, it's on the hop, many of them said they're getting into rocketry. So that's really difficult. Unless...
One thing Sarah does, we have what's called a rent rocks. And they are club rockets that if families come out, they don't know, they wanna see what we do. If they wanna fly a rocket, we have the club rockets there, two dollars, pay for the motor. And basically, they prep the rocket, go through your full flight, they put up a very huge flight card, they put them on a pad. So that's just something that we do to encourage our rent rocks. And also, an individual, what you can do as an individual, when you go out to the range, throw a classroom rocket on an Alpha 3 with a couple A3s in your collection, and then there is a new flyer out there, reach out to them individually, and say, hey, wanna fly my rockets? And the fact that you're offering your rocket, the personal touch, is gonna mean a lot more to the child. But it's something you can do on an individual basis.
Okay. All right, thanks everybody. Then, a lot of you are on sections, and get your section leadership to contribute in the section activities Yahoo group, and I think Chuck's actually looking for a new venue for that to enhance that's capabilities. But there's lots of ways if you could share this information among yourselves as well as ask questions. But again, I want to emphasize, like, bring ideas to the board and then talk to us about it. And you can contact us throughout the year, and we meet and have a phone conversation once a month to keep things going. So, you know, give us ideas and help us help you to fund these kind of projects. All right, it's getting late, I wanna wrap up a couple more things, but so, another thing that's come up is cost at national events. For example, you know, we constantly hear, our hotel costs are very expensive, and people can't afford the hotels, our banquet costs are escalating up, and what's the cost at a banquet this time, $50 or something? You know, it's a lot of money, and I'm not discounting it, but either we have to find different ways of doing banquets and those kind of activities.
You're doing it again. The first words on a rainy small market event is, oh, prices cheaply subsidized, and they have a $400,000 budget, and you're trying to encourage you guys, but hey, gee, we can take our credit cards and buy some blankets. You know, you guys are blinders on. This statement about how wonderful it is to get children everything is a farce, because when you guys stopped with the youth benefits for, when you travel grants, it was because you could all math to show that those five kids never get that dog. What does that have to do with being an adult, a born-again rocketeer? You're not, you're not look far enough to be able to fly. It's just life.
Okay. Well, again, need costs...
Any cost of his job?
All right, well, that's another thing, and I can tell you from our national events perspective, that we continue to work really hard to keep the cost down and drive the cost down, but we're, a slave to hotels and the hotel industry and restaurant, we can't control all of our costs, and if there's other ways that we can do things, and if like barbecue's out on the field are a way of getting around it, and that's the kind of thing, let us know, and we'll try to build those kind of things instead of a sit-down banquet that, I can't control the outcome of those costs. All right, yes.
Can I ask, anybody who thinks the hotels a little pricey, just to raise your hand, just to get a poll? Is the hotel a little pricey? Okay, is the banquet a little pricey? Raise your hand. Okay, thanks.
And I ask the inverse, do things that cost are reasonable? I don't wanna stay in a crack house.
All right. I'm not even going there. All right, and then, contestant numbers at NAR, that was brought up in math, I guess.
In response to that original comment, we don't wanna stay in that country. All of this conversation is asking the wrong people. You ask the people who aren't here why they didn't come. Not the people that are here, because they think it's appropriate, the cost is a factor. You ask the people who don't come. The people that are here aren't here for that.
The other part, there's some of the biggest costs for a family to attend NAR, when you have zero control on, like, if someone has to take time off work, what's the loss of income? They have to transport here. What does it cost them to get here to a NAR? So there are other major costs associated. We're just part of it. Having done, worked several Narrows and Marathon, it is, we are always keeping in the forefront, what are the costs, what are our options?
There's also the question, if we found places that were less expensive, we could probably be getting less facilities. Do we want rooms that are smaller, where the air conditioning doesn't work, or if a closing banquet, what is a former industry, just recovery, or a castle, which we could go cheaply? But somewhere there's a balance point, it could be something that's going to be a pleasant environment, or if you think we enough, and not, not a luxury environment. And there's, there's an issue in there, like, how do we, most places, we think, is, you probably could get to us, pay us what we get. You get what you pay for. Yeah, there's a lot of them. How much farther do you wanna go, say, if you offered up a registration or a hotel?
It's, I appreciate that. It's a, we'd sit out in top hotels and do this kind of thing for a long time, it's a very, very complex rubric of doing this kind of event.
And he's not whitewashing that. He has no idea.
You can't please everyone.
I know.
You do the best that you can in the situation, you find the best field that you can. You can't please everyone.
So, you're very...
Yeah, as a matter of note, I don't know if you remember the Marathon, or a major money event, but with the Chicago Marathon, the host hotel, that's $293 a night for a four-hour event. I mean, prepared with this, this is steel.
So there's really a common denominator, asking the wrong people these questions. And that brings up the fact that it's actually been a few years since we've done a membership survey. We're currently in the process of drafting questions for the next membership survey. And one of the things that we wanna get to is, what does membership want from the national events? And we can start looking into, you know, what the broader membership thinks about that. One of the things that you guys that are here can help us with, when the membership survey is released, talk to your sections, talk to your local people that aren't, say, give us your feedback, so that we can figure out what it is that is not attractive about the national events currently. What are things that we'd like to see change about the national events? We need that feedback from the people that aren't here, but you gotta help us to vandalize that membership survey's idiots. Keep an eye out for that, we're in the process of drafting the questions, we wanna make sure that we get a couple of different topics for national events, and the one we could talk about today.
I just wanna close with one thing. I'm your national events chair. edlecroy@nar.org goes directly to me. If anyone here has ever sent me an email in the past, through any mechanism, I believe I always respond to you personally, I don't blow you off. I will respond to any emails I get, I'll answer them as truthfully and factfully as I can. And I just want you to know that what goes into selecting these venues is a fairly involved mix, because we have certain demands. I could put you in an $80 a night hotel, and I can't give you a room to hold this meeting in, I can't give you a room to hold a banquet in, I can't give you a central hub. That doesn't mean that there might not be a different way to do this. And I am talking to our third-party support business, or helpers for this, about ways that we might do it in the future. But I'm not hiding behind any screens, if you have something to contribute, if you have a question to ask, edlecroy@nar.org. Thank you.
So I'll bring up the last bullet, and contestant numbers at NAR, and participation in all of our national events, my answer is probably not gonna be satisfactory, but we're trying as hard as we can as a board to figure out ways to get people to come to our national events. There is no, I have not found a silver bullet yet, I wish there were, but, you know, word of mouth, helping us come up with new ideas to try, I don't know, we'll survey, but if your membership has ideas that why people aren't coming to national events, you know, we'd be glad to hear and try to figure out if there's a way that's gonna make it happen. I've been thinking about this and nailing this problem probably for the last eight to 10 years, and trying different things, and trying to figure out different ways, and I don't know of a good practical, easy solution, so...
John, you seem to expand the item too, is, because NAR is only one of three national events, and of course, the NAR attempts to spread them around the country, so that ideally there's a national event in your backyard. So I think that has to be kept in mind here, is, NAR is only one of the three events, and I'm not sure that the numbers are necessarily down at all, the way you look at the subtotal of all American national events.
Okay, Bob?
Something like 3 to 5% of the NAR members participate in competition today, and the NAR focuses a lot of their time on NAR. 50% of the NAR members participates in high-power flying, and very little focus is going there. I think the association is spending too much time on one little sweetie meal, and not enough for most rest of the members.
Yeah, I'm the chair of the contest board, so I'm gonna do the counter, play me the box. I took this job because I lived in NAR '21 when I was much younger, and I had the best week of my life. The day after that, NAR was the sadest day of the year. Every year I'd go to NAR, the day after NAR was the saddest day of the year. I love everything about NAR and NAR competition. I want more people to do it, and I want more kids to do it. And that's my mission as a contest board chair. It may only be 3 to 5% now, but I wanna see that grow to be 50%. And I need everybody else that's flying in NAR to help me do that. We have 850-some TARP teams that flew this year. Only 100 of them got to go to the promised land. That means there were seven-hundred-and-fifty teams of youth that didn't have anything to do, and they didn't make it. I mentored TARP teams for several years, every year they're disappointed, we have never made it to the finals. This year, I told them, why don't we do this? There's this NRC event, you can build some rockets for those. We kept meeting after school when they didn't find it, when they found out they didn't make the finals. They built some rockets. We had an event this year called Y-Rock. On June 1st, we invited all the TARP teams from the state of Wisconsin to have a TARP-like event. Every TARP team from Wisconsin was enthusiastic about coming, we had some scheduling things. We had four teams, and in the morning, we did the TARP-like event. It was great. All four teams had qualified flights, some of them had never had a qualified flight before. But then in the afternoon, we start flying in NRC. We had five kids participate in the NRC portion. At the end of that day, two of those kids in A-division were first place on the scoreboard in an event. Now, they were excited. You guys gotta get out there, get your A-divisioners, get 'em flying competition. This is the age of instant gratification. The next week, when the contest board processes their contest and sees them up there in first place, they're gonna be fired up. And guess what? Two of my teams, their flying teams, are coming to NAR this year, and they're gonna try to kick some butt, you know? So... You know how many A-divisioners there are on the scoreboard? Twelve, yes, and five of them are the ones I recruited. Where the hell are the rest of ya? Get out there, get your TARP teams to make the finals, and tell them, listen, there's two space, there was the space-based competition, we all wanted to go to the moon, we all flew NAR competition, we all loved it. Then, there was a fall. Then, we had the baby boomers kids come up. We had a great time, had a great time flying with my kids. Now they're all grown up and out. The days of them coming and fighting us are over. The days of us building an E2X rocket with them, and them going out and flying PDD next day are over. We have to work at it, we have to be intentional. You just can't sit around and expect the A-B vendors to show up. You have to work at it, and it has to start at the local level. And yes, you can, you know how many outreach things are, Boys Club does, we do a ton too. We do these Boy Scout outreach things, we do these Girl Scout, we do these Salem Public Library outreach things, they build their little rocket, they go home, they forget about it. They're nice, but they forget about it. I don't wanna wait thirty, forty years for them to come apart. I want them flying now. And if I can go to that TARP team, they flew a rocket this year that had to carry three eggs, and one bird had to come down with two pairs of them. It was hard. They did it. They felt a damn good sense of accomplishment that they did it, even though they didn't make the finals. But that confidence said, hey, you guys can do this too. They built egg offers, they built boost pipes. Kid flew boost pipe, he beat me on his first flight. Then, get the middle school kids, they're hungry for this. I had one of the kid's dad say, NAR competition is the biggest secret out there for STEM. He had a friend of theirs, a brother or a sister visiting from California, their daughter came to one of our building sessions, he wanted to know what sections in California could help her do the same thing. I gave her the name of three sections around where they live. Sadly, I know none of them do TARP, none of them do NRC, but maybe, maybe they'll get the encouragement, maybe they won't. But that's, that's the whole point. I, I don't buy this fifty percent of the NAR. I care about competition. Most of the people here at NAR, or a lot of them care about competition. We need to do more at the local level to grow at these A-divisioners.
Thank you. Thank you. Any... Thank you. All right, any, anything else?
Uh, Pam Millor from Smash in NAR. As our club has participated in a number of national events, we hosted NAR 54 and NAR 59, NSL. One of the biggest things is cost to the section. It's very difficult to come up with a budget, and I'm told that you don't even use budgets anymore when you're awarding NARMs or something like that. They don't have to submit a budget, because it's too hard and it scares sections away. They don't really understand that, because you really have to know what's going on, but be it as a thing. The issue that we had with the last thing that we did was that the financial give and take between the NAR and the section, for getting things paid, for knowing what was going on, ended up taking a year to resolve and get final numbers as to whether there was money made at NAR, whether there wasn't, whose money was what. In order to resolve that, I think the answer is, is that the money comes from the NAR. The section doesn't get a grant from the NAR to pay for things and then pay things back. It has to be, it has to be streamlined, because it's too much of a mess.
And we, since you have said something, I don't totally disagree with you, I think there continue to be improvements that we need to make from national events to help streamline things some more, help people with some templates. But we spent a lot of time over the past year, year and a half, working on our systems to fix some of the problems associated with that. I mean, now we can pull data from our system much easier, you know, we just tore it apart and put it back together, and we're more conscious of it. Now we can download, you know, how much money's come in for a particular national event and keep track of it, in much better shape than we have been in the past. We can keep better track of, you know, who's registering and all that kind of thing. So, you know, it's not perfect yet, but, you know, we've heard this loud and clear over the past several years, and we're working towards coming up with some solutions on how to fix the website page and the inter, all these interconnections to help make the financial part of it a lot easier, a lot more straightforward. So, you know, we're working as hard as we can to try to improve things, but, you know, we're not quite there yet.
As an experience, CG, if there's anything I can do to help that process up here.
Okay, we appreciate that. Sure.
As I look around this room, you're talking about outreach, the number one thing we do for outreach is TARP, and as I look around the room, I think like ninety percent of the people that you adhere are mentors. What you do at the local level to work with teams to support them in TARP, and what you teach them, has resulted in the growth you've seen in membership, and it's, I think, built the future of our hobbies. So I just wanna thank all of you. I almost never get to talk to mentors, right? I'm always talking to the students or somebody else. You're the people who make TARP work, and I wanna thank you very much for what you do to make it work at the local level, and that's where it really counts. So didn't wanna miss the opportunity to say thank you.
Thank you. I'm not even gonna say I can stay here all day, we talked about this, but, any other hurting?
I'm gonna see if I can do this quick and without getting, opening up any new raffle.
We'll be the judge of that.
Number one, after what we've seen so far this week, I've asked this before, I'm gonna ask at least one more time, or maybe keep asking until I see something. The NAR flight launch system for NAR since, I think, nineteen eighty, the NAR needs to provide at least the electronic launch support equipment for NSL, semi-narrows for launch, like if you're a contest board.
We, to check, as a board today, we've asked our national events chair to make this happen this year.
Thank you. All right.
Should I quit while on the head? Have a quit while on the head.
Hey, that should get easier from here. Number two, a former NAR president once instituted something called a Needs Fixing Report. I'd like to see that come back. Number three, the inspirer of the order, testing whatever thing needs to be streamlined, so that you can just do it without having to follow down the speed and the actual...
And we'll take that under advisement.
Okay, so that's it. That's it.
Do I have a motion for the chair?
John, we, we, we need to have our new, our new board meeting, we're gonna be here.
A town meeting to adjourn, I know we have to do afterwards, the board meeting.
Okay, so before everybody, we have a motion, and we have the second, but all our board needs to be here right after the town hall meeting. We have one more piece of business we have to do before you guys can go celebrate your party. All right, so motion on the floor, and during the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you all.